I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McGade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you. And we have John Scott, Board Appointment Affirmation; Tim Buffy, MD of Advocate Bromen. Is John Scott here? Excuse me, John Scott. Tim Buffy here, not John Scott. Sorry. It's been a long day. Okay, this is, I think, is just for our information because this is a township appointment, not a mayor role and council appointment. Is that correct?
The Scott Commission operates under a court order, and there are certain entities that are required by the court order to make appointments, and then they have to inform you of who they've selected, and you just affirm. So Advocate Bromen is one of the entities that's allowed to make an appointment. So this is their selection, so then you affirm it.
We are required to affirm this. Okay. Thank you very much. I knew that under the boards and commissions that I had no role in this, so I didn't realize that the council did. So at this point, we do need to have a roll call vote?
The affirmation of the appointment is actually on 760.
Oh, it's on, I see. Okay. I got you.
It was under the recognition, I think, Dr. Buffy.
We don't need a separate vote on that. Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing none, then we move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone seeks to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item F, please.
Pardon me?
Item F.
Okay. Item 6F?
6F.
Okay. Any other items? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by Alderman Lauer, removing item 6F? So moved by Alderman Fazini. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruin. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, oh, actually, we do it on, sorry about this. This is only my second time of using this. Okay. Alderman Schmidt, you gotta help me. Oh, there we go. Okay. All right. Would everyone please vote? Thank you. Okay. How do I display this? Oh, there it is. Okay. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Okay. Now we move on to item 6F. Alderman Lauer, you concerned?
Yes, sir, and thank you, Mayor. I realize that some of this stuff is in the pipeline, and it comes up as it does. However, there are three of us that were not here prior to the April 8 vote that is cited in the paperwork here. And seeing that we haven't yet approved even a downtown plan, it just seems premature to me to assume that we would want to spend almost $80,000 on a study that really may not even fit into the plan that we may approve or may not approve.
The city manager can fill in here, but I believe the lighting master plan is separate from the downtown.
Understand that.
Yeah. Okay.
Let me have Jim Karch, our Director of Public Works, come forward. This is a particular project that he's been working with our deputy city manager and others. Would you go ahead and address kind of how this particular project ties in or is separate from kind of the infrastructure master plan, Mr. Karch?
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Mayor and Alderman, specifically Alderman Lauer, in answer to this, this is a continuation on some work that has already been done. You'll notice there's extensive work and reports in there about the work that's been done to this point. All this does is continue an item that was in this year's budget that we approved that the council looked at before. What this is trying to do is lay the foundation work, not just for that, you know, the larger master plan that you referenced. That is correct. The city has already invested quite a bit of money in the downtown lighting, what we do with some of the overall, the feel of it, what we do with some of the aesthetic values of it. So what this is doing is this is looking at not just where some of those should go, but, you know, the park benches, other items like that, but it looks at some of the issues that, from an engineering standpoint, that we have about some of the vaults, issues like that, that we struggle with in the downtown. So again, this is, this is one of those items that we had planned as kind of that continuation. And what the council does long-term with the downtown, this is that, this can be part of that, of course, but it also is an additional item beyond it.
Other questions?
No, I understand that, Jim, and certainly respect all the work that you've done previous. I know that I'm new here, but I have looked through it. I understand what you're doing with the circuitry, et cetera. The issue that I've got is it seems that, you know, we, as a council, rejected any form-based code in the draft that we have now come up with for downtown. And it seems that this may, some of this may speak to the tenants of that form-based code. So I just want to be sure that we're not kind of getting our wires crossed and doing some things that we really don't, as a council, approve of doing, you know, in this study.
Unintended consequences.
Unintended consequences, yes.
Well, we definitely wouldn't want to get our wires crossed when we're dealing with electric and light.
No, sir.
Okay. So if you could clarify?
Be glad to. This actually, just to be very clear, this does not have anything to do with form-based code. This is, this is something separate than that. This is, again, back to that more, the continuation of an already begun aesthetic improvement to our downtown. So again, it's different than what we had considered before with some of that form-based code.
Okay. Alderman Sterns.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jim. I understand that this is $75,000 to hire the Farnsworth Group to do a study. And, you know, I've really enjoyed seeing some of the streetscaping we've already done downtown. And I may not have my 100 blocks exactly correct, but I think, I know we've done quite a bit with lighting and landscaping and what, the 500 block? And then we were going to extend it. Is Hobbyland and the Grand Cafe, is that the 600 block?
Correct.
And I know we were going to extend that, which I thought was great. I remember approving that. And have we done that yet?
Yes.
Okay. I should know that.
It looks very nice.
Yes, it really, really does. And I think it's great to do these lighting and trees and landscaping that we, our citizens can see and can enjoy. And I think the business owners that I've spoken with are, you know, very enthusiastic. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned, you know, now we're, now we're looking at a conceptual kind of study that, again, we might not be sure what this study is going to come up with. So help me understand how this fits into what we've already done.
It's a good question.
Thank you.
It's a lot to clarify. What this doesn't do is this doesn't just give some light and fluffy feel on what's going to happen. What this is doing is, as the city manager pointed out before, originally, we had looked at a five-year plan, understanding that where budgets are, the city manager made a comment before, this is more of that long-term plan. So it's not something that is going to be unused. What they're looking at doing is trying to lay out based upon where we have the ability to run street lighting, where we have the ability to place some of the other aesthetic means. It was always the intention of this to lay out those multi-year plan of how do we finish and complete more of that downtown feel? So it's a great question, and that's what this is, trying to give more concrete plans for us to move forward and complete that, complete that process.
Other questions, concerns? Say? Do we have a motion then to approve or not to?
I will make, I will make a motion to approve the contract.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Black. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, oh, actually, that's right, you don't. Sorry. I'll get this eventually.
Clear the results.
Clear the results.
Start code on the left.
Thank you. Thank goodness Alderman Schmidt is here.
All right. This is high-tech.
Okay. We still have a couple of people.
Still have a few to come in.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Okay. Motion carried, 7-2. Oh, excuse me, and you were to announce the dissenters, is that correct? Okay.
So voting nay are Alderman Sterns and Alderman Lauer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have the regular agenda. Item 7A is the presentation of the fiscal year 2013 Comprehensive Financial Awards Report as audited by Skic. And we have presentation. Sickich, I guess.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Mayor, let me, I'd like to ask Patty Lynn Silva to come forward and to just make a few comments and to talk about our chief accountant and her work in preparing these financial statements, then if you would introduce our two guests from Sickich that are here tonight.
Sure. Sickich is here to present the 2013 audit, which was completed on October 31 of this year. I don't know if many of you know, but we had four vacancies out of 11 people in finance over the summer.
Patty Lynn, I wonder if, just, we're having a little bit of difficulty hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Speak a little louder.
No, it's not your fault. Yeah, they are perfect.
I have heard my voice is a little soft. So we had an interesting summer where we had four out of 11 vacancies this summer, and our chief accountant, Paulette Hurd, worked tirelessly to get this year's audit done on time without an extension. And we did receive a clean opinion, which we're very proud of. And although the city's finances have come a very long way, in the land of finance, we always want to see improvement. So we've been working through this year to continue to reduce the management comments and get our audit done cleaner each year. But our audit firm is here tonight. We have our partner, Chad Lucas, from Sickich, and our audit manager, Kelly Bruins, is also here. And Paulette is here to answer any detailed questions that you may have in the event that Sickich cannot answer them for you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, we're, we'll start the clock now. We've got roughly a 30-minute time budgeted for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city again this year. I'd like to extend our appreciation to Patty Lynn and to Paulette and the rest of the staff during the audit process. We know that we kind of, I guess, wreck everybody's life in a sense, in terms of, we ask a lot of questions while they're trying to do their daily work, and so we appreciate all their, all their time and effort in getting us the answers to our questions in a timely manner. I believe that you've had a chance, the information in your packet, and so you've had a chance to look through some of the information. I'll just briefly go through some of the reports that we have here today and be happy to answer, try to answer any questions that you may have. The first report is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Statements. We refer to it as the CAFER. The comprehensive piece of this is, essentially means that you submit your audited financial statements to the Government Finance Officers Association, and they do, they have a process where they review the financial statements. This financial statement goes above and beyond the basic reporting requirements by generally accepted accounting principles. It includes introductory, an introductory section, which has some discussion about the background of the city and things of that nature. And it also has a statistical section, which includes 10-year trend information on various things such as revenue, debt, operating statistics, things of that nature. So you've received the certificate for FY '12, which is included in the packet in the introductory section, and the report's been submitted to GF Way for the fiscal year '13 as well. There's generally a time lapse in terms of the review process before you receive word on whether or not you received that certificate. But you're to be commended for having a comprehensive financial statement. I'll just briefly go through the financial section, which includes the independent auditor's report, and as Patty Lynn mentioned, this is an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion. We believe that everything included in the financial statements is fairly presented. I always say that the audit opinion is the only thing in the audit report that's ours. We assist in the preparation of putting the financial statements together, but everything else in here is from your financial statements, from your trial balances, from your management's, management's discussion and analysis, things of that nature. Right after the independent auditor's report is the management's discussion and analysis. This is where I like to say that you kind of get the most bang for your buck if you're reading a 200-page report. It provides condensed financial information, comparisons of last year versus this year, and some explanations on reasons for increases and decreases in different categories. So right after that is the basic financial statements, starts the basic financial statements on page four. And included in there is the statement of net position, and this is your balance sheet. This shows your assets, lesser liabilities equals your net position. And included for this year on page five at the bottom there, you can see that in the governmental activities, you have a net position of approximately $140 million, 145 of which is the investment in capital assets. In your business-type activities, which are your enterprise funds, the net position's $180 million, and 173 of which is investment in capital assets. One question that I often get is where do we compare last year versus this year? Have we improved or deteriorated? And on page seven is the statement of activities. Near the bottom of that page is the change in net position, and this is the increase or decrease in both your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Again, this is on a full accrual basis, so it includes all the depreciation, the capital expenditures for capital outlays, all of your debt, things of that nature. But your increase in governmental activities was approximately $9.5 million. So your, in your governmental activities, it was an increase of $9.5 million. In your business-type activities, it was a little over $1.9 million. So the answer to that question is, financially speaking, you're better off than you were a year ago. After that, we have some fund information. One of the things I always try to point out is in the general fund on page 10, this is, this is on a modified accrual basis, which means that it does not include capital assets or depreciation or the liabilities. But in your general fund, your change in net, net change in fund balance was approximately $3.1 million. So you had a positive increase in the general fund as well. After that, we have some significant accounting policies, notes to the financial statements, a lot of detail that support the basic financial statements. One thing I also like to point out is on page 77 is the required supplementary information, and this includes trend information for your pension funds. So for your IMRF, your police pension, your fire pension, and your other post-employment benefits, it shows six years' worth of history on your funding status for those, for those funds. So there's some good information there. And then after that is some combining information, and then the statistical section is all the way in the back. It's the last section, and again, this shows trend information, 10-year trend information for a lot of different financial indicators and categories, revenue capacity, debt capacity, financial trends, demographic and economic information, and then other operating information. That's a very quick synopsis of a couple hundred-page report, so if you have any questions relating to that, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Okay. We'll start out with questions from our council. You're about ready to touch. Alderman Sterns, start with you.
Thank you, Chad. On the pension ratios, your statement that ratios should be increasing, I assume you mean that our funded ratio, is that, is that what you're talking about?
That's correct.
Or conversely, our unfunded ratio should be, should be going down in our funded ratio? Is that right?
That's correct. The funded ratio is the percent that's funded. So you want to see that continuing to increase to cover the actuarially accrued liability.
And do you, I don't think you do, but do you do any kinds of comparisons with municipalities, say, around the state in terms of funding, funded ratios? And I don't, honestly, I don't think you do, so I, I don't want to, but do you?
We have included in the, another one of the financial packets that you have is the auditor's communication to the Marion City Council. Included in there is some benchmark information. We do have a toolkit that we have, that we've included some, just some of the, a couple of the highlighted ratios, one of those, the funded ratios for IMRF. So we have, and that's at the back of the board communications packet. It includes a benchmark and then the city's information over the last four, four years or so. And we include information that we gather from other cities of like sizes. And we include a footnote that shows that the benchmark groups for the city comes from a database of over 100 communities in the state with a large population over 50,000.
And I, and I saw the toolkit tonight. I appreciate that very much. Real quick, just a couple of other quick things. Do you do a per capita debt? Do you do that? Do you give us that number? Because if, I'm sorry, I might have.
Yeah, that is actually in the statistical section of the audit report.
Okay. I can look, I can look for that. I just wanted to.
It's on page 133 and 134.
Okay.
And it's got the 10-year history of ratio of outstanding debt by type, and then over to the very right-hand side of the table is the per capita.
And what is our trend there, if you don't mind me asking?
It's from 2004 through 2013, and 2004 was 511. 2010 was 1 point, or $1,289. 2013 was 1,457. So it's, it's been, there's been an increase of per capita debt.
Per capita debt.
Yeah.
Right. And finally, just a general summary, if you don't mind, on your recommendations. I know, I think you had a different term other years for, you know, things that the city should be improving on, which is, you know, one of the reasons, obviously, that we have the audit. Is there a way to tell us what things are continuing year, you know, from one year to the next? Because some of them I recognize, like the whistleblower policy that you're recommending that's been recommended for at least, I think, two or three years in the past. So what I'm wondering is, you know, are we taking these recommendations and putting them into action? And that's what I'm interested in, in seeing. Thank you.
Sure. That's in the other, where the toolkit, the benchmark information was. It's the auditor's communication report. That includes our recommendations for improvements, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies in internal controls that we've identified. And I do not believe that we've included which ones are repeats. We can certainly get that information for you. The, after each of our comments, our recommendations for improvement, management has provided an audit response, anticipated action items, and in some cases, they may give timelines on, on when they expect to address these things. So we can certainly get which ones are repeated for you.
I appreciate that very much, and thank you. That's, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Other questions, comments from members of the council? City Manager Hales.
Mayor, I just want to point out on page 134, 39, page 139 of the statistical, is probably the best year-to-year comparison of full-time equivalent employee positions. I know Alderman Sterns has asked about that. This is the document we keep going back to because it does, it has showed up in each of the prior year financial statements. So if, if any of the council member wants to try and compare departments, programs, functions, year-to-year, this is probably the best document that exists out there and has always been part of the adopted or the approved financial statement. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I mean, several of us, obviously, have been trying to get a handle on that, as well as Alderman Sterns. You know, thank you. That's very helpful for us to kind of get a handle on this. Thank you. Other questions, comments by members of the council? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mayor, could we, I'd just like, if Chad could just take a minute on the Coliseum audit report.
Oh, thank you.
He mentioned the general city, but this is unique to have a separate audit of the Coliseum. If you could just give a few highlights of that and comment this one note that we'll be talking to the council in a couple of weeks about.
Before I get to that, I'll just also mention, too, we have a single audit report. You had a little over $5 million in federal expenditures. When you have more than $500,000 in federal expenditure, you're required to do single audit procedures on those federal expenditures. So the single audit report includes the federal expenditures, and it includes our audit opinions on those federal expenditures as well. The, the Coliseum report that he referred to is a separate, separately stated report. I believe that's the result of the management agreement requiring a separate audited financial statements. But everything that's in the separate report is also included in the CAFER, in the main financial statements of the city. So we essentially do a kind of a separate audit over at the Coliseum, prepare this report, and then incorporate that into the city's overall financial statements. Again, this is a clean opinion. The opinion that's in here, independent auditor's report, is a clean opinion. On page three of that statement of net assets, you can see at the bottom there, in the net position category, your total net position is about $22.3 million. And 24 of that is actually included is net capital assets, net of related debt. You have not included, in this financial statement, you have not included debt associated with the Coliseum because the payment, the repayment of the Coliseum debt has been paid for out of the general fund. But included in here is the unrestricted deficit of approximately $2.4 million. Most of that is the result of an inter-fund liability that the Coliseum owes to the, I believe, the general fund for transfers that were, a loan that was made in previous years, I think it was even before we started the audit, that related to the debt service payments associated with that. And so one of the questions that we've always raised since we've been doing the audit is what's the intention of repaying that debt? If there, you know, if, if there is no intention of paying that debt, there's possible consideration for you to, to essentially write off the receivable payable, the inter-fund receivable payable? It's a matter of intent in terms of, when we do this with every inter-fund payable receivable, if, if there's any sort of intent to repay. If not, then there's probably some sort of recognition that needs to happen within the financial statements to address the intention not to repay that inter-fund loan. On page four is the, essentially, the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in that net position. This is your income statement. At the bottom of the page there, you can see there's a change in net position. It's a deficit. It's a, it's a deduct, a reduction of about $646,000. Again, this is on an accrual basis, so it includes non-cash transactions such as depreciation. So the, the net position of the Coliseum resulted in a loss, so the position deteriorated during this, this past fiscal year at the Coliseum.
Okay. Questions, comments from members of the council? Okay. Oh, Patty Lynn, please come forward.
I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications.
Please.
As David had said before Chad wrapped up, just that we will be bringing, we are recommending that that receivable be written off, and that most of the time that we're speaking to you on a cash basis.
this past fiscal year at the Coliseum.
Okay. Questions, comments from members of the council? Okay. Oh, Patty Lynn, please come forward.
I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications.
Please.
As David had said before Chad wrapped up, just that we will be bringing, we are recommending that that receivable be written off, and that most of the time that we're speaking to you on a cash basis or a budgetary throughout the year. So when we come to the CAFR, it's just a very different way to start talking about an accrual basis and then a modified accrual, which we are required to report three different ways in that CAFR. So as you're reading through the CAFR, please keep that in mind. But most of the year, we're talking to you on a cash basis via the budget, and so the numbers are not apples to apples as you look through it. We will and are recommending that receivable be written off, certainly that's council's, you know, we've already sent that money, that money was sent pre the 2009 quarter point increase, that was way back when. But the likelihood that they'll be able to pay that back anytime soon is kind of a lingering old receivable. So we are recommending you write that off, but certainly it is council's prerogative. But the cash, it's kind of a non-cash entry that does need to run through the budget because the money was already sent, but we can't recognize the revenue anymore because it's really not coming back to us at this point. So just a little cleanup. And then to Councilman Sterns' point, in the back, in the toolkit, I just want you to keep in mind that those percentages for IMRF only include the active employees. So our funding level is really the 82%, but that benchmark is done just for the active portion, it's listed at 53. Chad can certainly confirm that, but I just want to make sure that you are aware of that. And then the debt per capita that you're referencing on 134 includes our capital leases and our IEPA loans. So generally, when we talk, when I've been talking to you about debt per capita, it's been based on our bonds, and it's a comparable that we use towards other cities with just our bonds. This is, you know, much higher than what we've been discussing because you're including your capital lease and your IEPA. So just wanted to make those clarifications. Thank you.
Before you, any questions of Patty Lynn? Alderman Sterns?
Just a general question, are there any taxable, outstanding taxable bonds, or are they all tax-free municipal?
We do have taxable bonds, the Coliseum bonds are taxable.
Are taxable. And what, do you happen to know what percentage of are outstanding, are taxable?
The Coliseum bonds are about $30 million. So I think we're about $80 million in debt. But we have, there's, you know, an opportunity that we will be looking at at some point to refinance a portion of that back into tax exempt, because when you're not making a profit, you can do that, and we can save some money there. So that's one of the things I'll be bringing forward during the budget season. But about $30 million right now, it's taxable.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Patty Lynn? Anything else in terms of presentation of this competence financial audit report?
Mayor, only one other comment, as indicated, through some staff changes and a lot of the turnover in finance, there is more of these recommendations that the auditors have given us than would like to see. However, over the next, between now and April 30th, we're going to be very aggressive to try and clean up and address as many of those. You will see our staff response to each and every one of those, but we hope to make much more progress, again, this winter than we have been able to in the past. So just wanted to point that out to the city council.
Okay. Questions, city manager David Hales, any other comments by the council? Seeing none? Thank you very much. So we'll move along from things that are controversial, like money, to something not controversial, like solid waste. We have a financial and programmatic policy options that are presented to us related to solid waste program. And the recommendation, of course, is by staff to have text amendments to section 307 and 301.6, in additions of sections 301.7 and 301.8 to chapter 21 of the Bloomington City Code be adopted and ordinance passed. We have approximately 30 minutes, given the nature of this, and that this has been in the works for several years, and we are now at a decision point tonight. It won't hold us quite to that exact 30-minute timeline because there may be some questions and concerns. Can I, well, let me ask, is there a motion, oh, excuse me, city manager David Hales?
Maybe just to help the council, Mayor, let me just, if I can, have Alex just step forward. He will present our recommendation so that the council can consider a motion and also identify what changes have been made since the last time we were before the council. So we'll make it very brief, then the council can proceed further.
Thank you, Alex, go ahead.
Thank you, city manager Hales, and I will be brief in my comments, as I know that council will want time to, plenty of time to discuss. What you have before you is amended from what was presented October 28th in the work session. At the work session, we presented what was provided to us by Rattell's Financial Consultants. They proposed three alternative fee structures, one slow, medium, and fast. Based on our presentation and the feedback we've received from council and the public, we identified the medium transition as the most popular option. That is presented to you as a staff recommendation. Two additional options we provided to you tonight is a uniform rate of $25 and a status quo, meaning that the user fee is to remain the same, and the general fund subsidy levels would be projected to continue on through fiscal year 2018. One thing that has been changed since we presented in October is we did separate brush from the initial charge of $25. What's presented before you is a recommendation to only begin the charge for bulk, as in large items, with the initial bucket scoop. So we would continue current practice with our brush, meaning leaf collection would be unlimited as it has been. Brush waste would continue to be collected for free up to the two front-end loader buckets, and then we would begin to charge $25 as current practice.
Questions of Alex?
Mayor, if I can.
Oh, excuse me, city manager.
I don't think we differentiated the two ordinances, but I'm looking at the very first one, and it's the one that's about three pages. That is the recommended ordinance. I think the one that is kind of the status quo is the two-page ordinance. So again, as the council, you know, wants to address a motion, again, it is the ordinance. Let's see, Alex, is there, I just want to make sure that it's the three-page ordinance. Is there any other way to kind of draw a distinction to that one, which the city staff and I are recommending that the council consider approving tonight? Has a little bit more verbiage in it and clarification, but.
It does. The other one highlights that it's a uniform rate of $25.
So again, just, I think if a motion to be made, it's the three-page ordinance, which incorporates the new variable rate schedule, you know, and the other things that Alex has just mentioned.
Okay. Well, let me start out by seeing, is there a motion to approve the three-page ordinance as presented? Yes. Moved by Alderman Sazini. Is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an alternative so that we can begin to have a discussion?
Proposal.
It seems like the third rail of our Bloomington City politics, nobody wants to touch this one. Alderman, through it.
Yeah, Mayor, I do not have a motion, but I think this typifies the difficulty in this, and we're all hearing a lot of different perspectives, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's not anything we're going to please everybody. I know our practice is to get a motion on the table and then go from there. For what it's worth, coming in here tonight, I see a lot of different interest in modifications, and that's why I think it's going to be difficult to get a motion out here to start with until we have some discussion. But I would like to see us have some discussion and then get a motion out there based on what everybody's saying.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, given the, given the fact that we did have a little bit of extra time from our previous presentation, and that this is so important, why don't we allocate about 20 minutes for conversation to see if we can come up with a possible alternative? And so let me see, who would like to begin to speak over roughly the next 20 minutes? Again, I'm not going to be terribly draconian, this is obviously very, very important. I'm just going to try to keep us generally within parameters.
I'm going to clear.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman McDade.
I would just like to ask a clarifying question before we take time to do that. If we felt like we needed to have more discussion than either we had time for this evening or so on, is this something that we need to vote on tonight? I mean, I'm not sure what the implications are.
Well, if the council's pleasure, we don't have to vote on anything tonight. I mean, that's up to us, right?
Well, I'm just asking, I was just curious from a staff perspective.
Obviously, I think after, what, two and a half years or so, Lynn Montai, we'd probably hope that we would come up with something. But, city manager, I was about to call you Alderman Hales, city manager Hales, sorry.
If I can, we have not begun taking reservations for the new household refuge carts. And the reason for that, we thought it would be best, when we did start taking those reservations, that people would know what is the direction we're going, are we going to go from a uniform fee schedule, which we have now, to a variable rate? And if so, what would those variable rates be? So we felt from, you know, communication to our citizenry, it'd be best if the council, you know, adopted or made those policy decisions so that we could so inform people, especially if they were on the fences to maybe a 65 versus a 95 gallon, the fee attached to those in the new variable rate schedule could have an impact to some people. So that, until that is happening, takes place, we have been holding up the registration for the new household refuge.
So it would be possible, if the council can agree on that portion of it, even if perhaps we can't agree on bulk waste, or if there are some other portions of it, if we could agree on a fee schedule, that would be helpful as we're administering this program for 35, 65, or 95, implementing, in a sense, the beginnings of pay-as-you-throw, right? Because clearly, at least of the people that I've spoken with, and I'm sure everybody's heard plenty about this, the thing that was least objectionable, not that people were rallying around a particular option, was either to pay a little bit more, as long as there was an option not to pay more, that is, do a 35-gallon can, that seemed to be, to have less resistance than bulk waste and leaf collection and other issues. Again, we can, let's go around, I have several people here who are going to begin the process. We're going to start with Alderman Sage, we're going to move on to Alderman Milowamboy, and Alderman Schmidt, oh, excuse me, Jennifer, and Alderman McDade, and Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Schmidt, and Alderman Black. Okay, so, and Alderman Sterns now, okay. So Alderman Sage, you have the floor. And so we're going to, I'm going to ask you about a two to three minutes, roughly.
Mayor, if I could, I think I have a couple of other questions before I maybe get into my comment, if that's okay. I'm just looking for some clarification, Alex. I know some of the feedback I gave asked for, you know, kind of service level and fee structure for the downtown. I think the mobile home courts, I know that was something that Kevin asked about previously, so appreciated that, that point. And then also just for the small multi-unit rental facilities, and I, I mean, what is, what is the proposed plan for those three entities?
Sure. Thank you for the question. The downtown really has not been specifically addressed in this. We have planned to look at that at a much higher level going forward. This was the intent to price out the variable-sized carts. And with the mobile home, we did present to council several months ago with the recommendation to discontinue service to apartments with five or more, as well as mobile home, but that recommendation was not approved, so we have not made any other recommendations since then. So they would, under this proposal, would be continued to be serviced as they currently are.
Okay. All right, thank you. I guess, and I'll be as brief as I can, Mayor, I guess one of my concerns is that I don't feel like we've had real diligent conversation around perhaps some changes to the service levels that we provide as a means to perhaps keep the cost down or the same, particularly for the folks who use that most basic level of service for solid waste. And by that, I mean 35-gallon solid waste, 65-gallon recycle, they don't, generally as a rule, have much, if any, bulk waste out. I know there were some conversations about perhaps looking at a couple of different times a year, maybe an early spring and a late fall, a couple of bulk week, kind of complimentary pickups, if you will. I know there was other conversation, and I don't want to make it sound like I was like removed from that, I mean, I was certainly in favor of some of those conversations, even to go to something as much as to look at brush pickup maybe once a month or something like that. I'm struggling a little bit with supporting the recommendation as presented without feeling like that we've had some real, again, diligent conversation around, you know, can we adjust some of the service levels? And does that afford us the opportunity to keep, perhaps if no other place, that most base level of service, you know, for the folks who really are the minimal users of the solid waste program, to keep that at $16 a month as opposed to some other increases? So I appreciate the opportunity to share that. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Alderman Milowamboy.
Okay. I just have a clarifying question, and I might have more questions later. But I don't know if I feel confident about us making a decision today or changing things today. It seems like it would be on the fly because there would be some financial implications to doing something on the floor. And I don't know how confident the staff feels about us doing that, coming up with something different than what was recommended. Wanted to know what your thoughts were on that.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
We're struggling because, just as I think you have read the comments from the Aldermen, it is, you know, there's comments kind of being made in many different areas. It is very difficult at this point in time for staff to understand where the majority position is on any particular element of this. So we're really struggling because there's a lot of statements being made, opinions being given, you know, but it, but sometimes they're not clear, they're not specific. Also, there's a lot of references to what we're hearing from the public. We did a lot of public outreach, but I don't know that any of those are real scientifically valid indications of what, you know, the majority, a random sampling of the majority might say of the community. So we're hoping that as a legislative body, you can begin to help us understand where is the majority position, even if it's for certain elements of this. And even with a motion being made, it can be amended to add, delete, things like that. But boy, at this point in time, we've done our best, we just really need to see some decisive, clear direction from the council.
I have to say, as I've looked, several people have asked me, what do you think the council's going to go tonight? After having read our collective comments, I have absolutely no idea either. And so, you know, I mean, I think it was Lynn Montai at our retreat said that she wanted us, if we passed something tonight, to call her so she could open up champagne or whatever because she feels like she's been, you know, a part of this for a long time. And there, I think it is, that there are a lot of things that have been weighed, and many of you have been doing this far longer than either I or Alderman Lauer or Scott Black have been on the, you know, been elected officials. But I think the staff and others are crying for direction from us. They need to know, beyond conversation, where are we going? If there's a piece of this, in other words, that we can do, if we're okay with saying, okay, $16, it'll stay the same for 35 gallons, you pay a few bucks more for 65, you pay a few bucks more than that for 95, if even that piece we can begin to give them, then we can begin to move forward with this. And so I'm not supposed to be talking, I'm going to go ahead and continue back to Alderman Milowamboy.
Sure. And I guess my question would be for David, so if we did that, how do you feel about that, just doing that, that particular piece for the carts?
And again, just so I'm clear, if the council were to just address which piece?
The differential in the cart, so getting a different fee for the type of cart that you're getting. So 16 for 35, I think it's 18 for the next one.
I was talking too fast. Essentially, what I was suggesting is what was, the part of it that was proposed, that was, if you're going to have, you won't pay anymore if you have a 35-gallon can, you pay a few dollars more if you have the 65, you pay a few more dollars more if you have the 95, even if that were one piece we could agree on. But that would be helpful, especially given the timing, right?
I would just say this, it is always helpful to kind of start with some sort some sort of methodology. Uh, I think what will, you know, cause many of the citizens to maybe pull their hair out, is if it's totally arbitrary and capricious of what number you attach to, to each cart. Now, I'm not saying, you know, we have reached out to Raftellus to kind of go through a process, and I think there's some, some justification for how they've kind of allocated that cost, but I think that's the thing you ought to, uh, be careful about, is maybe just being too arbitrary as to where to throw, you know, some of these numbers. Uh, and let me just make this other very important comment, think of, if you were to adopt a disordinance tonight, think of it as a transition, because just like on that bulk, bulk waste, it used to be, everything was free, you know, unlimited, then we went to two free buckets, pay for everything, now we're looking at a fee for every bucket. It may be that next year we'll be back talking about maybe a spring or fall, you, you gotta, uh, so just kind of keep that in mind, just because you may adopt this now, it'll help us get started. It doesn't for, uh, um, preclude us from in the future continuing to work on further changes, uh, especially as we get a little history, um, with, you know, how people are adjusting to not only the new carts, but also with the change in the fee for some of these services like bulk waste, thanks.
Okay, um, Alderwoman, uh, excuse me, uh, actually, that wasn't the right order, I'm sorry, um, Alderwoman McDade.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to have to ask a clarifying question, because I'm confused. Um, the, it says bulky brush collection, twenty-five dollars, charge for all bulky brush, but then it, somewhere else it says that this is not changed to leaf and, and, um, what, what does it say exactly? Leaf, leaf or brush? So I guess I'm confused if brush is or isn't a charge.
What's being proposed is, uh, status quo, how we handle it now, right now we allow for two front-end loaders free of bulky waste, or brush bulky waste, which is yard waste, large limbs, gardening wastes, and, um, leaf collection. So what's being proposed currently is to continue that practice, and the only thing that would then be distinguished as separate or different would be more of your large household items, things like furniture, uh, those are considered large items, still under the umbrella of bulk waste, but treated now differently as proposed, uh, with the initial twenty-five dollar bucket scoop charge.
Okay, so I would just make a suggestion that we, we remove the word brush, because that's confusing to people, because, I mean, it's either bulk waste, non-brush, or something like that, but that's, I mean, that's really confusing the way that it's written, I think, still a little bit. Um, you know, I, here's what I'm hearing, is that, you know, when we talked about pay as you throw, and I think this has been a concept I know we've talked about for several years, people got it in their minds that, that there would be a logical connection between what they would pay for their garbage, and how much garbage they felt that they had, and a two-dollar difference on a thirty-gallon, you know, cart stair step up is not fitting for people in a logical framework. In fact, I had someone say to me today, I'll just not take the garbage can, I'll just pay three dollars for the sticker on my one bag of garbage, because that's what, all I have, I don't have anything to put in the thirty-five gallon cart, and to be, to be honest with you, I mean, I, I think I'm, I can talk about the benefits of automation and so on, but it's, that's a difficult, uh, question to actually find a really logical answer to, and perhaps there really isn't one, but, you know, I guess I understand, and I, and I've said this, I think, over and over, I really do appreciate the amount of time and the number of options that have come our way, I think the reason we're having a hard time is because this is just, it's just not fitting with people, and so, I mean, as someone that has sat up here and watched these fees continue to climb, and as I know many of us have continued to commit to the, trying to keep these fees as low as possible, this, this is not resonating for people either, I wish I had a better solution, other than to say, um, the thirty-five, sixty-five, ninety-five, that's what people want options there, the fee structure is still not feeling like pay as you throw, maybe it's actually just not pay as you throw?
No, it's not.
Uh, maybe we should just stop calling it that. Um, the extra sticker fee is now kind of got people confused, because they say, well, I'll just have a one bag of garbage, which is not something we can do, obviously. Um, I'm hearing a lot of feedback about, and I know several of us have asked for a couple times a year where there could be at least a bulk garbage weekend, uh, maybe just one free load, but there's a lot of people talking about dumping, and how the city is going to police that, and I'm not sure we're well-equipped to do that right now. Um, so, that's, that's what I'm hearing, um, you know, I, I think we'd all like to get something moving forward, but it's, you know, we're just, just not resonating with people with, with some of what we have in front of us. So, I, I mean, I guess I'd ask to continue to think about a couple of bulk waste weekends, maybe one in the fall and one in the spring, where people could at least get a free, you know, one free scoop at least, um, to cut down on some of that dumping, um, maybe on the, on the cart differential, we just actually call it a cart differential, and we stop calling it pay as you throw, because I'm not sure it actually is, um, and, uh, I guess that's, for now, my feedback.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm making a few notes, so that if, if, if there's any possibility at the end of what's actually supposed to be only a few more minutes of initial discussion, we might be able to have a possible, you know, compromise, uh, I'll throw those out to you. Before I move on, my understanding, as I look at this, is that, that it was not an option for you to, that, that, that the, uh, the sticker was on, as an addition, it was on top of something, it'd be like me going into a restaurant and saying, you know, actually, I'll take the side of potatoes au gratin, but you can hold the filet, you know, I think you're, my, my understanding was that that was just on top of this, but, and we, we could perhaps make that a little more clear, uh, we'll move on here in, in the order in which I initially saw you, Alderwoman Schmidt.
Um, and actually, Terry, I think that, that's part of the problem, is that there's a, still a lot of misunderstanding out there. Um, first of all, regarding the downtown, I was at a, recently at a downtown property owners' meeting, um, and there is conversation with, um, DBA and downtown property owners, uh, Tricia Stiller and Frank Hoffman, and I imagine they'll be talking with Barb as well, um, just looking at other best practices, and, and trying to come up with a recommendation that they can take to the staff and try to work something out, so that's where downtown is. Um, I got a phone call, I started getting phone calls before eight o'clock this morning, um, on the basis of the Panograph article, and I think one of our problems is, is that we did have this public input, we had surveys, we had focus groups, we had a work session, and people, somehow we still haven't connected the dots, and I'll, you know, use Alderman Sage's line of sight, we have not created that line of sight at all for where we're going with this. Um, I think we bundled a lot of this together, and it would be very uncomfortable for me to try to vote tonight only on cart sizes, because people are still going to say, well, that's great, but what about my bulk waste? You still haven't figured that out, are you gonna cha- charge me more for that? Um, so I think we need to, to figure it out, um, and I appreciate that the staff is really frustrated with us, and I, I feel like a lot of the recommendations that we've made kind of center around the same ideas, and I guess I feel like I need to know if any of our ideas actually are financially doable. Um, you know, I, when I, when I think about what I've heard, and, and what I've heard from all of you, I'm hearing that thirty-five gallon cart, just hold it at sixteen, don't ramp it up, just sixteen, you keep, you know, we're incentivizing recycling, do two bulk, um, pickups a year, and then everybody pays for extra, and keep brush and, and yard waste exactly the same, but I don't know what the cost of that is, I don't know if that's doable, I don't know what that does to somebody who takes a ninety-five gallon trash can, so...
Actually, since you've got something very clear and tangible and concrete, so let's go back to that, and then we're gonna, okay, so you're basically saying sixteen...
Okay, so I am saying, and, and keep it there, no ramping up.
For thirty, for the thirty-five gallon.
Yeah, if you take the littlest gallon...
Thirty-five gallon, you, you're, you're not gonna pay more, and then we, we would ramp it up...
Not, not this, not an FY fifteen, and not, not an FY eighteen.
No, I got you, so that would stay the same, when you go to sixty-five, you'd pay more, ninety-five...
Right, and I don't know what that number would be, to help us with the numbers.
Right, okay, and then, but, keep...
Two bulk waste pickups a year is courtesy.
Two bulk courtesy.
And, and roll that into the cost.
Okay.
Um, pay for extra, um...
What do you mean by pay for extra?
So, if I, if I, I'm a landlord, if I have a tenant who, who does a clean out, whether I know about it or not, and, you know, I, give me the opportunity to make that phone call, and, and charge me for it, charge me a realistic amount of money for that.
And then the, um...
And then brush, brush and yard waste, same, exactly the same.
Brush is basically, they're not, they're not proposing to make any changes in that.
Right, but I, again, I, I think we can't, we can't do this in pieces, that's, I couldn't vote for that.
Well, one, one thing that we might be able to do, I'll, I'll call this initially the Schmidt proposal, if I can, for further...
Great thing.
Well, maybe I won't call, okay, eh, eh, one alternative, we could conceivably, if there was support for the council, we could conceivably make the motion second, and then table it, and then see at the next meeting what the cost might be, and, and David, I'm sure is about ready to stab me, but...
Let me just make one comment, eh, 'cause I, you know, I've heard several times this idea of having at least, uh, twice a year, maybe in the spring and fall, a free, uh, bulky waste pickup, or something like that, there seems to be several comments, uh, that is something we can even administratively, you know, do. The, the problem and the challenge is, we're just gonna have to work through the logistics, because once you say, you know, all the rest of the year, you pay for it, but in the spring and fall, we'll have a period in which it's free, uh, Jim Karch and his people are going to have to stagger that, you know, one, we've got to make sure we have the capacity, manpower trucks, everything else, to take what could be a very unknown spike in bulk waste, uh, and, and again, I'm not saying we couldn't do that, I think we can, we can try that the first year, uh, they'll just have to work out a schedule so that each, uh, particular pickup, you know, is, is maybe, uh, what, kind of separated, so that we can make sure we can still pick that up as well as, uh, any other, uh, bulky waste that is for a fee. So even with this, uh, I think I even mentioned to someone, if we had a, a weather event, like we recently had, we thought that in those cases would probably also want to, especially for brush, not charge, again, a mother nature sort of event, there's gonna be instances like that, that I think we can still accommodate, and, and at least try it for one year as a pilot, a spring and fall free pickup on both ways.
Well, and, and let me just, you know, we, we talk about spring and fall, but realistically, you're gonna have to figure out how you stage that fifty-two weeks a year throughout the whole city, and I maybe would like mine in May and November, but it might turn out to be January and September.
You'll have to be on the dates that, yeah, probably...
And, and I adjusted that with my recycle cart, you know, I wish you'd pick it up every week, you don't, you know, so, I mean, we, we all have to make adjustments, and I understand that, and, and I, I, this is sort of picking on, um, the idea Scott has talked about with, with the bulk waste pickup, but honestly, if, if I had to, if I, as a landlord, if I had to hire a dumpster every time I had a clean out, I would be more than happy to call the city, and, and, and schedule it the way that I'd have to schedule anything else I do with making an appointment, basically, so...
Okay, let, let me just ask, uh, just as, I, I know I'm asking you for the, a lot here, but if we went with the, as a, as a proposal, what Alderwoman Schmidt has suggested, um, you know, keeping sixteen dollars, the thirty-five, excuse me, gallon at sixteen dollars, uh, and then charging more for sixty-five and ninety-five, perhaps consistent with what's mentioned, then the two bulk containers, pay for extras, and keep brush the same, if the council had a majority support for that, would that be sufficient, would, is that enough guidance for you to move forward?
Well, let me, and I'm looking at page two of the stat backup report, uh, and keep in mind, the effective date of this is not till May first, two thousand fourteen, I'm looking at the column that calls for thirty-five gallon refuge cart sixteen dollars a month, uh, sixty-five gallon refuge cart eighteen, and the ninety-five gallon refuge cart twenty dollars. Now, that, that's our recommendation, and that's what the ordinance calls for, I'm, is there a difference between what we have here and what you're referring to?
It's, it's the future years, uh, Alderwoman Schmidt, if I'm understanding you correctly, you, she, she wanted to keep the sixteen doll, the, the six, the thirty-five gallon at sixteen dollars, uh, for the foreseeable future, so in other words, there would be people who are perhaps on fixed incomes, who could say, I will not have to pay more for my trash if I can, you know, live with a thirty-five gallon cart, so in other words, that would be flat, is that correct, Alderwoman Schmidt?
That is correct.
Correct, so it's, it, it, I believe that would go up in three years, if I'm not mistaken.
And I, I, I would throw out for the council, I, I, I think, I think it would be, uh, more prudent to just strike fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and just adopt the fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
For one year?
For at least one year, and I say that because we can't predict what's gonna happen to cost.
Correct.
Fuel could go out at, you know, out of the roof, and things like that.
So if I can, if I can go ahead...
And frankly, we can always come back, depending upon our experience with revenue and expenses, and, yeah, make a case for a change.
I, I, I am, I am mindful that I know that Alder, Alderman Sterns, Black, Frue, and Lauer have asked to speak too, but I'm, I'm wanting to seize this moment, because we had something as concrete as we've ever had, and, and comprehensive from Alderwoman Schmidt. So what we could conceivably do is have a proposal where we did for just fiscal two thousand fifteen.
Just adopt that, strike all the language for future.
What you have in front of, what we have in front of us, sixteen dollars, and for thirty-five gallon, then we move to sixty-five gallon, and the ninety-five gallon, those increased rates very slightly, and two bulk containers, pay for extras, and brush stays the same, we could conceivably do that tonight, and that would got, provide you with guidance.
And again, yes, just to adopt the fee schedule for fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
And it would allow us to tell people, you, you, you want the thirty-five gallon, as we're distributing these containers, if you don't want to pay anymore, and that's, that stays the same, okay? Now, if I could go ahead and then move to those who had asked to speak, and again, I, uh, I, I haven't been keeping people to three minutes, and I'm still gonna, because we're, we're about out of time, we're, we're obviously gonna go way over here, but I'm gonna ask you to confine your remarks to about three minutes, and I'm gonna start with the Alderwoman Sterns, thank you for your...
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a subject that is critically important to the citizens of Wilmington, and that's one of the reasons I think it's so difficult, I think they're very, very, you know, in general, happy with a lot of the service we provide, and when we start really, you know, messing with it, so to speak, I think we have no idea of a lot of the consequences, and like, for instance, just to pass this tonight, to me feels like, well, we have to pass something so we can see what's in it, so we can see how it works, and that, that really concerns me, because I want to be voting for something that I really can support. Um, just a couple things, the, um, bulk waste we have right now, people obviously, they love that, and why wouldn't they? I mean, the only people who don't love it are the ones who have to look at, in the inner city, what the landlords put out sometimes on their parkways, which is extremely unsightly, and just a, to me, a real problem for the city, for the image and the look and feel of the city. But other than that, people love it, and right now, it's three sixty-five, twenty-four seven, anything you want to put out on the curb, you can. Um, now, we do charge for the extra, but still, that chair, that table, whatever it might be, and I think to go to twice a year is a really draconian cut in that, and by the way, we haven't said whether we're still going to have the yards, whether we're still going to allow citizens to bring, and that's critically important, I mean, that's so important as a part of this, because a lot of people really do use that and love that too, that they can put it in the back of their pickup truck and bring it down to the city, but I've heard rumors that that's being, that's going away, do we know?
Well, it won't go away unless you vote, unless the council votes for it to go away, so...
I don't vote for it to go away.
Uh, I think, we, we, that would be easy, I think, to go back to, to, to include, to clarify in the, the proposal that we were talking about here.
That the yard is gonna stay, as it is.
The yard would stay the same, the brush would stay the same.
Okay, and that, and that, that would, that would help to know that, um, but I think it's far too draconian to cut down to twice a year, I would recommend maybe every other month at least, or maybe even once a month, you know, as a transition, so to speak, until we start, um, you know, until we start charging, but to go straight to charging for every time, or even to go straight to twice a year, I agree with people, and I'm, of course, the fan of pay as you throw, but I agree that there would, could easily be a dumping problem, and we haven't addressed, you know, littering, and we haven't looked at how to prevent a situation of dumping, or, or things of that nature, and I think that really, I think we should, I think that's critically important, because of the system we have in place that our citizens are so very, very accustomed to, anything you don't want, just put it on the curb, um, and I don't think cutting to a, you know, draconian, um, thing of going way, way down is, is good, or certainly not charging every time. And I want to say one more thing, and then, and that is, that the pay as you throw is so misunderstood, it's, it's distressing, the heart and soul of pay as you throw, there are two things, one is fairness and equity across the board, what you put out is what you pay for, not if you're an apartment building... Not if you're an apartment building, not if you live in a mobile home court, but this is what you pay, because this is what you put out. And the second thing of it is, is incentivizing recycling, because recycling is free. And that is, that is a big, big part of it. Um, you know, to me, still, um, I like a lot of Alderwoman Schmidt's proposal, but it's still true, too draconian for me, there are lots of unintended consequences that we're not yet thinking about, and I think we need more time on this very complex and extremely important subject to our citizens. Thank you.
Sure. And just to, to clarify, I guess I should more, in fairness to Alderwoman Schmidt, these were ideas that Alderwoman Schmidt placed upon the table, and I deliberately seized on them because they were specific, so, and, and we didn't talk about this beforehand, it, it's just I'm trying to move us along. The, the other option is that some of the perhaps horrors that we think might happen if we actually act and begin to do something, we'll find out whether those horrors happen, and if they don't, then we're okay. If they do, we can come back and change them. And, and I think, again, after several years of working on this, uh, I would recommend, regardless of the specific content, that we act and we step up to the plate as policymakers tonight. Now, just, uh, in, uh, City Manager Hales, and then I move to Alderman Black.
Very quick, Alex, can you just answer the question, what is gonna change, if anything, with the transfer station? Or does it remain status quo?
We, staff hasn't noted any support for a previous recommendation of closing, so we, we haven't recommended since.
So it's gonna stay open? There's nothing in this ordinance that would close it down?
Right.
Or change anything as far as people being able to take?
And when Alderwoman Sterns comes back, if you'll give my indulgence, I'll, I'll let her know.
Yeah, materials for the transfer station. So that's status quo.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so first of all, I, I wanna thank you and, and staff for having to work with the council. Sometimes we can be, uh, very vague about what we want and nebulous, and, uh, I think that, uh, we've had long discussions about this, well before I got on the council, and, uh, I, I understand Lynn Montai's, uh, sentiment that she wants to be invited to the party when, when we pass something. So, that being said, I think that we're, um, there is a disconnect, and I, um, struggling to, to, to fill that, that gap. To be clear, as a policymaker, I, you know, there's one thing I am, I like to think that I'm decisive, and I can move forward from a decision, and I'm of the opinion that if it is not be going the way that we want it to, we can make adjustments as appropriate. But I am abs, I'm, I'm with Karen on, on this, or Karen's ideas on this one, uh, not the Schmidt amendment, um. There it goes. Um, I, uh, I think that I can get behind that, but there's a couple other things that I really need to see addressed, and, um, that disconnect I'm talking about, I think, I'd like to see something where, um, when we come back, and I, I'm getting the sense that we're gonna come back to this, um, make it very clear on the website, um, how will this impact different types of people? People are having a hard time reading through the proposed changes and understanding how it's going to impact their families. So I would like to see a couple different scenarios that, that would play out, that someone could say, "I'm a family of, of four, this is where I'm at, this is where I'll be under the new, um, uh, proposal." Or I am a landlord with, you know, five apartments or whatever, this is, this is how it's gonna play out. Um, you know, and I, I've taken, I, I, as I imagine many of you have, and, and the mayor nine times as many as I have gotten phone calls and emails about this, and, and there's, there's a lot of themes that I see coming through here that I think that we, we can do a better job of, of capturing. Number one, I'd say that the most feedback I've gotten, um, most consistent feedback has been that people don't want us to raise the fees, but they want us to continue the level of service, which I think is unsustainable. And, and I'm happy to provide that feedback to them, but this is where I think that illustration of the scenarios would be, would be critical. Um, and I think that to some extent, it is in our best interest to be subsidizing, um, some, to some extent, um, our solid waste, uh, program, because I think we all have an interest in keeping a beautiful city. I've mentioned before, I'd like to see this come part and parcel with, um, a increase in fines for dumping. I know that's a, a challenge, but I think that if we're gonna be charging people, um, for, uh, bulk waste, we gotta be on top of, the neighbor can call in and say, "Hey, my neighbor's dumping that out there, what are we gonna do about it?" And, and I, I know that, that, we talked about, um, you know, I had asked about where we are in, in the ordinance and where it is, um, but I think if we can really hone in on, um, those types of legal dumping, um, whether it be on somebody else's property or someone just leaving garbage on it, if we start there, that might be a, uh, that'd be something that I would, I need to see before I can move forward. Um, the other one that I, I'd like to talk about, we, we talked about the transfer station, that needs to be publicized a lot more. People are under the impression that that is going to be, uh, uh, shut down and no longer an option. Um, I'm definitely on board with the idea of, of twice per year. Um, I had a gentleman call me who, uh, gave the example of, um, if he throws, if he cuts up his bush and, and puts it out, there's no change, but if he has a kitchen table made of the same amount of wood, he can't have that picked up. I, I can see where that discrepancy is, but, you know, when, when people say, you know, "I love bulk waste," how much bulk waste is one truly producing that, that requires them to be throwing things out all the time? I think that's, that's a, that's a larger issue. So I, I think two times a year is, is reasonable. If we wanna do more than that, I think Jim is gonna have his work cut out for him logistically and working that out, but I think we can do it. I, I don't think that that's something that's an impossible barrier. Um, and I think we can really utilize a lot of the, the resources that we already have, whether it be through the, the regular media or through, um, other means to reach out to people and tell them when we can do those bulk pickups, when we get that all sorted out. Um, so that's my comment. I, I think I would like to, I could, I could support, um, the ideas that Karen has presented, but I'd like to see it come with, um, more specifics for, um, uh, when it comes to, uh, twice a year, ma, being very clear about how each proposal is, is impacted. And there was one question I also asked in, in the staff, and this comes from a, a conversation I had with a gentleman, um, who's a landlord who, who has a couple different, uh, buildings with, uh, just a few units in them that don't necessitate a dumpster. And he was, uh, dissatisfied that we hadn't, uh, come up with a means, or at least to him, a, a discussion about, um, whether or not, um, you know, you can combine units, so not every unit requires a, a cart. I know that the staff said that that might be a, a challenge and consolidation was examined. I'd like to see some of the ideas that may have been thrown around so we can at least have that conversation, 'cause it seems like that was something that I hadn't even thought of until today. Um, but we can maybe rig something up, where if I have four units, do I really need to have four carts? Perhaps I can just do two. I'd be interested to see what that conversation looks like.
Okay. Well, just to clarify, I think the, the one thing that we, would not be wise for us to do this evening is to try to rewrite ordinances having to do with penalties on dumping, but, uh, let's see, moving right along from there, Alderman Fruen and then Lauer.
Could I just answer?
Oh, I'm sorry, City Manager Hales.
The answer's to the council, we did mention those fines for illegal dumping currently run from $100 to $500. So it can go as high as five. Uh, I, I would just caution that every time we talk about raising those fines, you know, to a very high limit, we'll have also the, uh, fee, or complaints about it being too unreasonable, you know? The fine doesn't, uh, meet the penalty. Uh, I also wanna point out that the communication plan will come as we kind of get things established by the council, and, and unfortunately, that's one of the problems we're having. There's so many different ideas, people are speculating, you know, but we will definitely have a very robust communication plan, once we kinda have some specifics and we know, and I think a lot of these things can be addressed in that, including the transfer station. Um, and I, I think the landlord issue, there's probably more problematic issues there, but that's not to say we can't look at those in the future. I think there is some concern with maybe trying to address that right now, tie that up with everything else. So just a couple of questions.
Yeah, thank you, and you're, we're not, we're not signing away our firstborn tonight. I mean, I think that we have to realize that, that we, we, we are gonna continue to look at this, and we're gonna continue to monitor, especially if we're only changing fees for to fiscal 2015. We'll begin to see how some of this unfolds, and we can come back, and if there are serious problems, then we can address them. If, uh, Rome, or in this case Bloomington, doesn't fall, and it's actually quite smooth, then we can continue to deal with things at the margins. But, um, Alderman Fruen, I'm sorry. You're next.
Thank you. I'll try not to duplicate. I think what I feel has been consistent messages from me with regard to trying to keep this as simple as possible. I think we have so many different constituents out there in any neighborhood that we're hearing different things that, what's best for me, that's really what I'm hearing. And whether you're a single person, whether you're a family of five, whether you keep your, or you, whether you, uh, spend a lot of time near yard with yard waste, whether you've got a brand new home, I mean, we're just all across the board. And I think for this to work, you've gotta simplify it, it's a basic service, and the more complexity we bring into this, then it creates logistics for staff, and we don't really know how staff's gonna get some of these things done. But one of my themes has been, are we adding more government, more cost, more labor, more staff to get this done? Yeah, I, I'm sitting around here looking at all of us, and I'm thinking, when do I clean out my garage and when do I do my yard work? Well, I'm more apt to do something in April and October than I am in the middle of July or August. So I hope that I'm not assigned July and August for my lawn waste and tree trimming and bulk waste, so I, I might be contrary to everybody else, but I don't mind stepping this back a little bit, but this twice a year thing, I'm not sure I really buy into that, and, uh, what's best for me is April and October. So, anyway, that's about me. I, I would like to be optimistic and think we could get something done tonight, but I think it's too important of an issue, and I'm not inclined to get real excited about a motion. If I would make any motion, it would be to delay this a little bit and see if we can, uh, speed this up and, and get some consensus, but, uh, the other thing I'll mention in closing is that we've talked about automation, and we've talked about, uh, getting the program to pay for itself, and if we wanna backtrack a little bit, and I'm not against this, but if we, uh, as you throw, you're adding some non-automation issue, and if we want to, um, back off and subsidize this through the general fund, then we all know how that works, we need to get some money from someplace else, sales tax or wherever it is, and, uh, so we got a lot of moving parts here. Uh, I think we really have to stay focused on what has been our purpose the last couple years, has it been automation, and has it been getting the program to fund for itself? If we wanna change course, then let's make sure we're aware of what we're doing, so. One theme is simplicity, one size, to the extent we can, one size that fits all, kind of a more global look, and something that's simple for the community to understand.
Thank you. Alderman Lauer.
Well, I, I agree with many of the things that, uh, I've heard here. Um, I think from a management standpoint, Mr. Hales, um, it is important to try to make it a simple message, a simple change. One of the things I think people would, uh, would, would, it would help them to understand where we're coming from, is if we could break it down in terms of a cost structure. Obviously, we're not, uh, dealing with a for-profit entity here. Um, so there are economies of scale, and we capitalize on those, in the fact that there is a cost associated, probably the largest cost. Alderman Fazini, uh, pointed out with his little study, financially, um, there is a, there is a cost to having the truck show up every week, whether you have anything to put in it or not. And so they need to understand that as a property owner, that is a cost, whatever it might be, that portion of the $16, okay, uh, to have it, it might be 14, it might be 10, I don't know, it doesn't really matter to me right now, but if we could tell the public here, this is what it costs for that automated truck to show up one day a week, okay? Here's what it costs to have that dump, uh, uh, open. Here's what it costs to have, uh, the bulk waste, uh, dump truck and, and tractor show up, okay? And to have that service available, whether we use it or not, we still, as a citizen and a property owner, have to accept that. As a renter, we have to accept that. One of the things I don't think that Bloomington is willing to accept is any, uh, decrease in cleanliness of our environment, okay? And so I think that probably has to be, uh, paramount on the backside when we start to think about this and conceptualize it, okay? We're not willing to accept, uh, all of the detrimental effects of even having that couch sit out behind the shed for an extra two or three months, okay? Those are the types of things that will happen, okay? Set aside the illegal dumping and, and all these other things, people will try to do the most conservative thing. We have to keep in mind that, yes, they are customers, but they're also, uh, our owners, okay? And we have to answer to them. And so if we can break it down so that on an, and I think Scott has a great idea, if we come up with some scenarios of an average median family here in Bloomington, um, obviously we're not, you know, all with three kids at home and, and, and a spouse, uh, but if we had several scenarios where, you know, we had the single person, we had the small family, maybe we had a, a large family, and then the costs associated with each of those, okay? And, and that way, people would maybe be a little bit more malleable to understand that if we're gonna have this service, this is what it's gonna cost us. And I'm sure, all the feedback that I've gotten, is that they are not really willing to accept, um, all these other issues with having brush sit around, having the, the couch sit out behind the shed for two or three months.
Right. Well, if, if I could, just on that, that one of the difficulties, and I appreciate wanting to have that information, is, a, a, as a social scientist, that's a nightmare, that you're never really gonna get, because it's.
That's what we signed up for.
No, 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 but I'm saying, you, you can have four or five people in a household, and you can say, "Well, in a family of four or five, you know, this is what you're gonna do," but it depends on how much you recycle. In, in, as a, as a household of three, I have, I realize, I have a 20 gallon tank, uh, can, and I, I never exceed that, because I have so much in recycling. Other people might not, right? So, so that, that's what I think is, is gonna be, I mean, we could come up with a number, but it's not really gonna necessarily mean much of anything.
The bottom line here is that the recycling is not free, there is a cost, a real cost associated, they just may not be getting charged for it. So we're offering that free, just like we are the brush, in, in this example, okay?
Right. Well, let, let me, uh, given the fact that, um, I'm gonna make one attempt here, to see if we can come up with some, uh, consensus, I'm gonna go, based on what I've heard, I'm gonna go back to the ideas that were expressed by Alderwoman Schmidt early on, and that is, she had the idea that for this coming fiscal year 2015, we would have $16 if you had a 35 gallon tank. You would have the staff recommendations for 65 and 95 gallon tank. She initially suggested that there may be, that we would go to two bulk, bulk waste pickups a year, pay for extras, but brush would stay the same, we'd maintain the yards. Given that there seems to be concern about what the bulk waste would do to our community, uh, I would, is there, would anybody be willing to make a motion and a second to Karen? Well, the, the ideas that were expressed earlier by Alderwoman Schmidt, except for the bulk waste. Now, so that would essentially mean, we'd keep bulk waste the same for now. Uh, we could, you know, we can work on, continue to work on that. You would pay for extras, brush would remain the same, we'd maintain the yards, so the variables that would change, in a sense, would be pay for extras, and then the staff recommendations for the 35, 65, 95 gallon tanks, but only for 2015. The advantages of this, uh, of course, would be, staff would be, get some direction from us. Staff would be able to begin to implement this, people as they're getting, they're 35, 65, 95 gallon tanks, would have some idea of what they would be paying. We would begin to close a little bit of the, the fiscal loophole, and we would begin to see how behavior would change, and we would then be able to go forward, and, and some of this would, there'd be incentives for recycling. So if I don't wanna pay anymore, and actually, I, in my particular case, probably wouldn't pay anymore, Frank, at this point, I'd be happy to pay more, so we could move forward, but, um, the, uh, the $16, I would probably do that, 'cause I have a 35, a 35 gallon tank would be far more than I would need, so there'd be, if I wasn't quite doing that, there'd be incentive for me to be involved in recycling a little more. Alderwoman Schmidt.
Um, I'm personally very uncomfortable voting on something for one year, knowing that we have set a goal, presumably, of, of covering the cost, and so it's sort of disingenuous to say, "Well, it's only gonna cost you $16 or $18 or $20," because there's a very strong likelihood that over the course of the next four to five years, it's gonna cost more, and I guess, that's my question back to the staff, without too much labor, can we figure out how that's gonna ramp up if that is our goal? I, I, I mean, I, I just, I feel like we're just, you know, biting this off in, in one mouthful at a time, and that's, you know, not, not being clear.
Well, we, I, I guess, in this proposal, it, we hadn't discussed tonight the progress that we're gonna make toward closing the two and a half million dollar gap. We, we're having difficulty even chipping away at that two and a half million dollar gap, and, and again, my, my intention here was only to move the conversation a little bit forward and possibly get something, and that, I mean, I understand all what you're saying. I understand all what you're saying. Now, we could conceivably pass this for 2015 without a sunset, that unless we do something different, this will stay, right? And City Manager David Hales is nodding, so it would be, this will be our change in 2015, and unless we come back and change this, unless we come back to specifically say, we're going to change bulky waste, or whatever else, so we're not going to maintain the yards. It seems like there's no real support for that on the council, but at this point, that would be possible, correct?
Yeah, and let me point out, you know, by at least going with these fee schedules for beginning May 1, 2015, we bring in an extra $1.4 million, which is critical, because as you can recall, the current fiscal year, we use fund balance by the tune of about 1.2 million. That one, adopting these fees, at least for fiscal year 2015, and I would recommend no sunset, but we eliminate all the other future, it's going to go a long way to helping us with that $4 to $5 million funding gap we already are starting with for fiscal year 2015.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that is, if there was an unknown component of people who will be recycling something, you know, if there are, say, there are 500 people who don't put as much trash in, they conserve because they want to keep the 35-gallon tank, we're going to be, in a sense, saving money if we have increases in recycling.
It is, but again, we're about 70%, I think, recycling, which is very high. Hopefully, we'll see that go up, but whether, I don't think we're going to see significant reductions in our costs, you know, by adding another 5, 10%, but hopefully, even those who go with, say, a 65 or 35-gallon, they'll want to continue to even recycle more to make sure they don't have to use any of those $3 stickers, you know, for overflow.
And it may very well, it may very well be that, in other words, some of that gap is saved, not by people actually paying more money, but by some practice. And I, so I'm going to go to Alderman Sage, and then I'm going to actually, because we doubled the conversation, I'm going to ask if there is a motion, and Alderman Sage, you have the floor.
Well, just a point of clarification, because I know, Mayor, you've said 2015 now, and David, a second ago, you said May 1, 2015. We're talking about fiscal year 15.
It's fiscal, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Fiscal year 15, this, May.
Which is May of next year.
And again, the effective date of the ordinance before you is effective May 1, 2014, which is the first day of our next fiscal year, yeah.
So I would just say that, again, you know, I think that the chart needs some rework. I think Jennifer makes a great point. We have something on here that says bulky slash brush collection. I don't know if that's bulky waste, or if that's brush. You know, I always get a little leery, I'm a little leery about voting on these things on the fly like this, when we don't have something written in front of us. And so I guess I would have some discomfort, although I understand the sense of urgency to move forward.
Okay, yeah, and just to clarify, as I understand what Karen had suggested, and then the one change I would have suggested, if there was support for it, would be to remove the two times-a-year, you know, bulk waste. None of these other things would change. So in other words, regardless of whether or not we remove the word brush that Alderwoman McDade suggested, the, none of these things would change. The only things that would change would be, a 35-gallon tank would cost you 16 bucks, 65, a few dollars more, 95, a few dollars more, and you'd have, you'd pay for extras. So in a sense, those would be, if I'm, if you could clarify, City Manager David Hales, those are the only changes. Right. Everything else would remain the same?
And again, say that, let me just say, those definitions were carefully reviewed. Staff is comfortable, the definitions we're using in this ordinance have been, you know, the bulk waste collection has a very specific meaning, together with the fees to be attached, and the brush waste collection has a very specific meaning. So we're comfortable knowing that that brush waste collection, two free loader buckets per week, and you only pay for more for brush, you know, if it exceeds the two, the two buckets.
And that's our current practice, anyway. That's our current practice.
Yeah, now, but again, for bulk waste, it currently is that you pay for every bucket load, $25. But what I'm hearing the council saying is, but there would be two free periods each year, that we would have to determine administratively, that would be the exception to that rule.
Well, actually, what I was suggesting was that we not do that, because it didn't seem like there was support in the council. What I'm going to do, since, what I'm going to do, again, I'm going to amend my comment here, I'm going to have two more Aldermen speak, and then that's going to be it. If there's no motion, then there's no motion. Alderwoman, excuse me, Alderman Fruen, and then Alderwoman Sterns.
Mayor, I will not make a motion at this moment, but I'm, let me start over. I'm ready to make a motion that we delay this for further discussion, but before I would make that motion, I would defer to anybody else that feels like they have something viable that could pass, that would work tonight. So I'd rather be optimistic if somebody feels that way, otherwise I will make a motion.
I'll hold your place, and I will go to Alderwoman Sterns, and then we'll see.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, to me, I mean, this is way too confusing, and part of the confusion is that I don't think people clearly understand the way it is right now, and to give a good example, a little bit like what Alderman Black is saying about small apartment buildings. For instance, if we go to these 95 carts and all that kind of thing, a small apartment building right now, no matter what it puts out, if it puts out nothing, and it conceivably could, it's going to pay two times the fee for every unit. So like, a four-unit pays $60, no matter what they put out. So when you do this, if you're going to have bigger carts, well, maybe that apartment building could say, well, gee, this 95 cart would do fine every week, but are they going to pay like $20 times five, or $20 times four? So that is, for your part of the city, with a lot of, you know, older homes that may indeed have that extra apartment here or there, and my part, that is a really important question, and a true pay-as-you-throw is the bigger the container, that's what you pay. So, anyway, that is an important point. There are just literally hundreds of duplexes, three units, so on, throughout the inner city, and that is a really important point. You do have to understand that your landlord is a very valid complaint, because he's paying, if he has four units, he's paying 15 times four, 20 times four, whatever, no matter what. So, anyway, that needs clarification, and I think this is way too confusing for me to really go forward. So I would second Jim's proposal that we continue.
Let me see if there is a positive, is anybody prepared to make a positive recommendation that we act tonight? Okay, since that's not the case, Alderman Fruen, I turn to you, and I think Alderwoman Sterns is ready to second your motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I would suggest that, with appreciation for the very good discussion we've just had, that we defer this to the mayor and the city manager for further follow-up and determination as to when we will, again, discuss it as a group.
Second.
Okay, okay, there's a motion on the floor, and there is a second.
Can I make a comment?
Alderman Black.
Thank you. So I guess ideally, in my best-case scenario, is I'm, we've had this, this has been going on for so long, I think people are asking us to make a decision, because this uncertainty is a lot for the staff to handle. I'm getting the sense that we have a number of little changes that we're trying to make. Is it possible that in this motion, you guys can present different scenarios that are more than, that, you know, what we have on the table right now versus what we've talked about, and then next week, or next, whenever we do it, talk about, I want to have option B, I want to have option C, that encompasses some of the changes that we've talked about, because we've gone back and forth about that $16, just for the 35, but I also, in doing so, present those scenarios, and I know that it's impossible to guess, but I think people are more curious about, what would I pay if I chose to have this 95-gallon, or what would I pay if I chose to have a...
Well, that's been, hasn't that been out there for months?
It is, I don't think it's as clear as people want it to be, because I'm getting feedback from people that are saying, explain to me how this is going to impact me, they describe their scenario, and I'm having to go through it.
Right. Well, there is, I think there is another observation here, too, again, along these lines, is the more that we drag this out, the more there's going to be, I'm afraid, confusion rather than clarity.
Right.
And every time there's a new article, I get all kinds of calls, and I'm sure all of you do, and so at this point, assuming this motion passes, I think what we should do is, as I recommended at the retreat, by the time of the next meeting, and I think we should do, at least make one more stab at doing this, so that this doesn't keep festering, and we keep going, and we're wondering what's going on, is come up with some specific elements. So I'm asking council, we need to lead, I'm saying, council, come up with some specific elements, send it to staff, not, maybe this, that, the kind of conversations, specifically, like a, whatever, a Sterns-Milowamboy plan, a Black, oh, stop, a Black Schmidt plan, or whatever. In other words, these are the key elements. So are we going to go with the carts, and how much, how much are you going to pay? What do we do with bulk waste? What do we do? Do we do pay for extras? Have it specific. So we're not just deferring this forever. So perhaps by the next meeting, and ask us if this, assuming this motion passes, come up with some specific proposals, and we'll maybe have two or three that we present from the council that are ready to move, and we hold us to 30 minutes, because we've heard, we've heard our arguments back and forth, over and over. So maybe the next meeting, I'll talk to the City Manager David Hales, if this is possible. So I would say, I know you've got Thanksgiving, I know we've got other stuff, but let's say, a week from tomorrow, so you have proposals for us to put together about what specifically you would like us to do to move forward. And, you know, if you can interact with staff, that's fine. If we can't, then we can, right? But at this point, I mean, I realize it's confusing, but I don't know that I've heard anything tonight that I haven't heard over several times. I mean, many times, and I know we've got some issues that we're never going to get, we're not going to get this right in one time, we'll have to see how it unfolds, but that's what I would like us to do, and I'll be hounding you for your proposals if I don't see any. So again, Alderman Fazini, you pretty much have the last word, because we're going to move and vote on this.
I call for the question.
Okay, I was going to do that anyway. All right. So we have a motion and a second, and a motion made by Alderman Fruen, and seconded by Alderwoman Sterns, for us to direct the mayor and city manager to, I guess, come up with some possibilities, and my initial suggestion was, we'll make one more try the next meeting, even if we've got to carve out an extra half hour, hopefully, we can make this happen. And again, if we can't, we can't. So everyone would vote, please. Actually, you've already started. Thank you. There we go. A motion carries eight to one. Madam Clerk?
Your nay vote is Alderman Fazini.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, city manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a few quick comments. One, I think recognition should be given to the Central Illinois Arena Management, John Butler, Bart Rogers, I met with him recently, and you've probably seen where they have now come up on a very, very quick time schedule. The Rock to the Rescue Entertainment Event on December 4th, this is something they're doing. A lot of their staff time, time and effort is being given free of charge, but SIAM itself wanted to come up, and they reached out to a number of entertainers, would you come in and donate a lot of your time to help raise money for Washington, Illinois, and the rebuilding there? So again, this is a specific initiative of SIAM, and the entertainers are working with this. It's, I think, we're just covering some of their expenses to get here, but there's, the whole intent here is to really raise funds for Washington, Illinois, and I think it's just tremendous that they have been able to get a number of entertainers, some new ones today, just came out for this December 4th event. And then secondly, and Mayor, I think you're going to comment on a little of what some of our departments have been doing to assess, I'll defer that. And then just a reminder that this Saturday, Small Business Saturday, I did put just a little article in your box, and Alderman Schmidt, I did tell Mark Huber that he better make sure that the gates at the Market Street Garage are working this time, or I'm going to get another phone call. But yeah, we're trying to make sure that all the parking garages will be working this Saturday for small business. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and I would call everyone's attention to this week's Time Magazine, and it's just an unbelievably devastating picture of Washington, Illinois, and it's not just what's happening with our neighbors. We need also to be ever vigilant here, because this wasn't that far from us. And related to that, there were some questions about the sirens, and in discussions with Curt Hawke and others, there is a fine line on the sirens, and ultimately, the decision and the policy of McLean County is that they don't do it unless the threat is imminent, because they don't, it's sort of like the boy crying wolf, they don't want that to happen. So one of the things that we want to make sure that our citizens know is, when you do hear those sirens, you need to take shelter immediately, right? And I do wanted to, again, thank our Public Works Department, or, excuse me, I guess, our Parks and Rec Department, as well as our police and fire for stepping up to the plate and helping our, you know, our neighbor to the northeast of us, northwest of, excuse me, and I believe today, we even had Parks and Rec people out. And thank you all very much, and this is just really, just shocking, tells you the power and problems and crises that can, that can happen. And in a sense, it hopefully also helps remind us of our common humanity, that of all of the differences we might have over bulky waste or whatever, you know, at the end of the day, we're all Bloomingtonians, we're all Illinoisans, we're all Americans, and anyway, thank you, City Manager David Hales, also for updating me. He called me within minutes after, words to give me an update, and I thank you for that very much, appreciate it. Moving right along, I'd like to thank the entire council for participating in a retreat, a two-day retreat, that it was extremely productive, and in terms of getting to know each other in a variety of ways, and we got to laugh together, and, you know, make mistakes together, and a variety of exercises and discussions. I think it was really, really great, and I very much appreciate it. I also want to thank Alderman Sage for helping with the process of the city manager's annual evaluation. There was a considerable lag last time, and we are on timetable tasks to make sure that that happens, and we will be in touch with the council in early December with some information, and thank you for all you've done for that. Further, I did go on Thursday with Chris Kous and Kevin Callis, who offered to take us to a facility of State Farms in Lincoln Park, in, not too far from downtown Chicago. It's called Next Door, you know, your neighbor. I highly recommend you go there. It's almost like Facebook meets State Farm, or Google meets State Farm. You go in, and it looks like an out, kind of like a cafe, but it's a cafe slash internet, well, internet cafe slash sandwich shop slash place where you can go to hold business meetings and take classes on taxes, or investments, or yoga, and State Farm does it at no cost. They don't even, they don't, there's not even a light sales pitch. You have to ask them for an agent, and it's really just a fascinating project. They learn, they're learning a lot about millennials, your age, their Scott, and others, and how very different couples are, and how different investments are, you know, being made. I highly recommend it. And it's also, instantly, people, of the nine employees there, eight of them have served and lived in Bloomington Normal, because they worked for State Farm, and about half of them were Illinois Wesleyan University alums, just saying. Further, wanted to note, in terms of what's coming up, the downtown plan is in all of your boxes, and I certainly want to thank staff for making this happen, City Manager David Hales, Farbadkins, working with our people to make sure that this is something that's a good 5,000-foot plan for our downtown. It's certainly easier to leverage capital and other kinds of investments downtown if we have a plan. You're not going to get money, as pretty much anybody can tell you, at least externally, unless you've got some sort of plan that reflects some of what the people who live in the area, and investors and stakeholders came up with. Also, fairly soon, we'll be having the proposed changes that Alderman Sage and Alderwoman Schmidt and I have worked on with respect to our boards and commissions. There are also liquor commission, changes to liquor licenses that we are going to be hearing on December 3, and I have gotten some comments from some of the members of the council, and I think I will be back in touch with you on that, but it'll begin December 3, 4 o'clock, right here. Also, we've got some good news in a couple of places. There is a Bloomington Normalopoly that is available, and if you buy it, the proceeds go to the Child Protection Network, which is a county agency, but does not have adequate funding, and has to get a lot of money through private fundraising. And just to, for everybody, every time I see, you know, something monopoly, like Spider-Man monopoly, or Fantastic Four monopoly, I want to know who is Boardwalk. And in this case, we all should realize, Boardwalk is State Farm, right? Finally, nerdwallet.com had, last year, rated us as the 11th fastest-growing economy and city in the United States. The top 10 places were all Sunbelt places, including Mountain View, California, with Google and Facebook, and we were 11th. Well, I want to report to you tonight that we are now... Well, I want to report to you tonight that we are now 4th in the United States. And they've talked about the growth in our population, our earning working population, growth in our income, the growth in our airport and passengers, and air traffic, growth in employment, and how reasonable our cost of living is. And then for some reason, they took mention of Illinois State University, I'll need to educate them that we have similar kinds of programs, encourages students to be involved in the political process in the city and American democracy project. So, anyway. Certainly, we are moving right along, and that's why Bloomington, of course, is the center of the known universe. If we can move right along to comments from Alderman, Alderman Fruen.
One other upcoming event, that's always an annual tradition, that the Parks and Rec Department puts on, is the Turkey Trot. You know, it's a lot of work that they put on. It's more than competitive runners, it's more than recreational runners, it's families, it's the O'Neills that come home to have turkey with their parents. There are a lot of out-of-towners that come back. It's a great chance to showcase Miller Park. I think Miller Park is one of our key parks that we all appreciate, and so let's hope for good weather on Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you very much. Alderman Lauer.
Just a few comments here. I'm just going to touch on the Washington Peak and Roanoke area, and the fact that I've had the opportunity to travel by the area and kind of preview the damage, and also have had contacts out there in the area, and some actually were victims and have lost their humble abodes, and wondering if there's not something that we can do in addition, and maybe capitalize a little bit on, not only helping them, but inviting them to our, our community, at least on a short term. And it would require thinking out of the box, possibly something with a short-term public transit, or in conjunction with maybe a public-private entity that we can come up with short-term, so that those folks get back and forth to maybe our apartment complexes here, possibly keeping a car in town, and then having a car in Washington so they can go on to work where they are. A number of folks work right in the, in the local area, and having a very hard time finding even semi-permanent housing that's adequate. We've got three and four families living in two-room apartment buildings, we've got a number of people living in hotels, and not really knowing where they're going to go, or what they're going to do. They know that they've got to replace everything, but they don't know even what to do on a short term, even to get back to work when their work sites are still operating. So I'm wondering if there's not something that we can do in addition to try to facilitate that, and invite them to come stay with us in our, in our city and pay rent here. Also, would like to commend our police officers, we had a number of police officers that acted as first responders and have helped to secure the area, not only in Washington, but a number of the other locales, and we had some first responders as well. We even had some nurses from our medical facilities that showed up and helped out, and a number of folks that stepped up and covered their shifts, et cetera. So a number of people have volunteered, and very, very proud of not only Bloomington, but all of Central Illinois, for taking care of our own. I think, Mayor, you and I conversed just briefly, I haven't talked with Curtis Hawke directly, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't at least have a conversation about possibly allowing those sirens to be activated a bit more timely than imminent, because that is a very, very late period of time in case something like that would happen. We actually did have severe weather that passed us right by, and could have turned on a dime and caused a great deal of detrimental effects right here in our own community, and we didn't have the sirens. There has been a change in the past, where anytime any part of the county would be affected by an imminent threat, they would sound the sirens for the entire county. They're trying to pinpoint that. Obviously, technology with meteorology has come a long way, even the past five years. But still, weather is probably the most dynamic and most powerful of all forces out there, and we cannot control that. So the only thing we can control is our message to our citizens, and I'm concerned that maybe we should at least have that conversation.
Actually, it is my understanding that the McLean County Board's Justice Committee is going to be, be, next month.
I know they are, but I think that the Bloomington proper should probably step up and have our own statement, and maybe be part of that discussion. So, thank you, sir.
Sure. Alderman Sterns.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a quick note on that, we were, I was told over and over on the radio, take cover, not think about it, not anything, but take cover right now because you won't have time. So if, you know, when it strikes. So if that's not imminent, you know, frankly, I'm not sure what is, but I would agree that, you know, something needs to, I think, maybe change a bit when we're told to take cover, but we don't hear any sirens. But, you know, I understand the variances out there. But what I really wanted to say was, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and a big part of my thankfulness is for this incredible city that is so blessed, and so incredibly blessed financially in so many ways. And with the holiday season coming on, a question for, I guess, our city manager, that's come from a citizen, and that would be about a Christmas tree, or something within our city. My husband's working in another community in Illinois right now, they have a wonderful tree lighting ceremony, and the whole community rallies around it, it's very, very nice. So many communities just have that focal point, where there is a, you know, a tree. Now, we've been asked by a citizen, and even if, you know, the answer is frankly, no, we can't do that, I'd like to know one way or the other. I think last year, we put a tree rather late in the back by the parking lot. I don't know, somehow that just didn't seem quite, you know, quite exciting. So wondered if, just as a rallying point, and just a nice thing to do, it's also a longstanding tradition that I certainly grew up here in Bloomington with from the time, you know, forever. If, if indeed there will be, or will not be, a tree, so we can let one little girl know, and whatever, I'm not asking for that right now, but I am asking that we get that answer. Thank you.
Okay. David, do you want a last comment here?
I don't know, I'd have to see what staff has planned, just hasn't been on my radar.
Okay. Imagine that.
Too many solid waste fees.
Oh, there are four at the History Museum?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, at this point, do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman McDade, seconded by Alderman Scott Black, and we're adjourned. Still, still didn't quite go to two hours.